Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Want to thank you for attending the luncheon. I'd like to mention our club luncheon sponsor, Albretta and Albretta Law Firm has been supporting this luncheon for several years now. So if you need legal help, please think about calling Albretta and Albretta. The goal of the club is to bring together all Democrats from the most conservative to the most progressive to celebrate our shared values, appreciate who we are and to work together to put more Democrats in office. So welcome, and due to the subject matter, we may have people attending our luncheon today who are not Democrats and you are of course also welcome. Our program today will feature the seven candidates who are running for three positions on the Durango City Council. Just a little bit of procedure here, we'd like to ask everyone to stay muted except for the candidates, myself and Kathy Devine and Karen Pontius, who will be handling questions after the opening statements. If you want to submit a question during the luncheon, please use the chat feature on Zoom. So you click on chat and it'll bring up a window and you can type into that window. Send your questions to everyone in the chat window. In other words, there's a little dropdown. Make sure it says everyone. That way both Karen and Kathy will get it. Please do not unmute yourself and speak with this many people on here, you know, that could become a mess. So we appreciate your cooperation on that. And also due to the number of candidates, when we get into questions, each candidate will only have one minute to respond. So please don't expect really detailed answers to your questions. Again, we've asked them to put their contact information into the chat window and you can always contact them if you have more questions later. Each candidate will have three minutes to make an opening statement. The order in which the candidates will speak has been chosen at random. And after all the candidates have given their opening statement, we'll start with the questions. If you're having trouble with your internet connectivity, you may want to disable your video because audio only works better on slower connections and you can just click on the video button until it shows a red line through the button. The Zoom meeting is being recorded and it'll be available within a few days for viewing. You can also choose speaker mode, which is typically in the upper right corner. And that'll bring up a larger video of the person who's speaking. Also just wanted to mention that while the La Plata Dems are okay on funds for right now, some of our biggest fundraisers have had to be canceled due to the pandemic. So I would encourage everyone to donate to the party. Monthly donations are particularly appreciated and you can set those up on ActBlue to where it just goes automatically. And of course, monthly donations make it easy for you to give to the party with relatively little pain. This is our second club luncheon for 2021. The Club Luncheon Committee has been working to bring some great programs for the coming year and I think you'll really enjoy them. If anyone has any other announcements to make, please enter something in the chat window and we'll recognize you at the end of the luncheon. So the order for the opening statements will be Frank Lockwood, Jessica Buhl, Harrison Went, Melissa Youssef, Olivier Bosmans, Seth Bertney and Lisa McCory. And then we'll rotate through that list for the first person to answer each question. So Frank Lockwood, please unmute and you have three minutes for your opening statement.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Frank Lockwood. I've lived in Durango for 10 years. In that time, I've served on the La Plata County Planning Commission for four years. Been on the Board of Directors of Planned Parenthood of the Rocky Mountains. And the Speakers Bureau of the Colorado ACLU and I have run the Durango Tourism Office. I also ran Dick White's reelection campaign and during that I wrote a book published by the American Bar Association and then traveled the country lecturing on subjects related to basic business principles of running a small law office. As Dick White and Fay have commiserated, we have both failed miserably in our retirements. All of this has taken place after 30 years of law practice where I started, grew and sold the practice to my associates after having gained a reputation for mediation and conflict resolution skills. I practiced in a metropolitan area, Honolulu, that is larger than San Francisco and was chosen to teach judges and lawyers how to settle cases rather than litigate them. Alternative dispute resolution aspects of all types of cases then became part of the larger court system, relieving backlog and reducing legal fees for tens of thousands of people. It is these skills which I will bring to the city council if elected. It is a little self-serving to say boastful or positive things about myself, so don't take my word for it. I have three quotes on my website, one from Sarah Severson, founder of Raven Narratives, Dave Woodruff, famous restaurateur, and Dick White, former two-term city councillor and two-term mayor. Please check out those on my website, frankfordurango.com, which also includes my thoughts on major issues we face in Durango. Many of you know Dick, so feel free to see if he can justify those lofty things he says about me. Sorry, Dick. When choosing a candidate to vote for, I believe it is every bit as important to try to determine from what they are saying and from their background, the kind of city councillor they will be. In other words, I believe that my skill and expertise are as important as any position on any given issue. As Dick will testify, one can start out with one view on how a problem will be solved. But after careful listening and understanding others' points of view, the ultimate solution, sometimes way down the road, ends up looking quite different by the time it has arrived. Skill, experience and judgment. This is what I will bring to city council. Thank you for attending this forum.
Thank you, Frank. If you will mute, appreciate it. Jessica Buhl is next. If you'll unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you, La Plata Democrats, for hosting those in attendance and all the other candidates. A little about me, so I'm an entrepreneur, a coach, a trainer, and most importantly, a mom. I work hard every day to live in this amazing town and I can't imagine being anywhere else. I moved here 19 years ago to attend Fort Lewis College where I got degrees in English, Literature and Education with endorsements in Spanish and math. Like many of us, my first job in Durango was waiting tables at local restaurants. I started my professional career as an English and math teacher in Durango schools. I then transitioned into a marketing and business development role for one of the largest construction firms in the country. In 2016, I opened my first business here, Lucky Services. I have over 50 employees now in two locations in two different states. In 2018, I saw a need for digital marketing services in our region and I opened up Marketing Concepts Squared. And then in 2019, I had the opportunity to be a co-founder, I mean co-owner of my gym, The Vault. I am the co-founder of the Professional Women's Network and served on the board for four years. I currently am part of the Durango Chamber diplomats. I was honored to be awarded the 2018 Entrepreneur of the Year, the Ed Morlin Award, and was named Trainer of the Year in 2020 Best of Durango. I think what is important about me is that anything I do, I give it my all and I never quit. I have two boys that were born and I'm raising here and attribute my success to them. Everything I do is to show them that with hard work, dedication, creativity and a positive attitude, you can accomplish anything. So why city council? It's a commitment to public service, a commitment to this community that has given me so much and I don't want to see lost over time. I want locals, my kids and future residents to move, live and work in Durango for the same reasons I fell in love with this community, build three businesses and I'm raising my boys here. It's a commitment to effective and creative leadership, giving our small businesses a voice, giving hardworking citizens a voice, giving the people that work multiple jobs to barely afford to live here a voice. I have been passionate about politics since I was a young girl, researching issues with my grandfather. And in this current political climate with Durango being at a critical stage for effective, pragmatic, thoughtful and collaborative leadership, I want to make a difference. My leadership style is listening to expertise, researching issues and meeting with those directly knowledgeable and involved and making the best decisions for our community as a whole. It's working together with an open mind on every issue and willing to listen, learn, collaborate and come together for the best interests of our community. Issues I'm passionate about: small business and keeping the heart of our community growing and vibrant, housing opportunities, smart growth, a future for Durango with respect for the spirit and character of our past and more. I feel like it's time to do my part. You can go to jessicafordurango.com to learn more.
Thank you, Jessica. Next is Harrison Went. Unmute and you have three minutes, Harrison.
Hello, my name is Harrison Went. I am 23 years old. I've lived in Durango for four years. I'm running for Durango City Council to fight for bold structural change. We as a community over the past year have been both awakened and challenged through a pandemic which hurt our working and middle-class people and our small businesses. Through a social uprising after the murder of George Floyd, we saw our community come together to support those grieving loss. And we saw movements start here in our very town in defense and advocacy of black lives. I was honored to be a part of that movement. Last summer, I listened to the stories of heartache and pain from our black and brown neighbors. I heard them and I hold them at the forefront of my knowledge and activism. The struggles of our BIPOC community are one that I have never lived and will never understand. I believe that black lives matter in Durango. I believe that indigenous lives are valued in Durango. This is when I felt compelled to run for Durango City Council. I heard a call from our community, so much larger than a single issue. A call that sang the same tune of pain and heartache, the tune of struggling people, a tune that even I live. It was a call for equity and inclusion, a call for economic justice. I listened to stories of people making $12 an hour and spending over 60% of their income on rent. Stories from our working and middle-class people pleading for some form of affordable housing. Financial gain and opportunity should be accessible and sustainable to all people. I heard a call from one of our neighbors who has previously experienced homelessness in Durango. The years of waiting, the red tape, the lack of empathy from people living in their multimillion dollar homes. The neighbor saying, "We want a solution, but we don't want them near me." There was a call from our neighbors who are immigrants asking for help and solutions with little to no response back. These are neighbors who didn't qualify for federal support during the pandemic. I watched a family get evicted. I heard from a woman whose family was evicted. She was maintaining two jobs, doing the Durango Tango, some might say. There's a call for bold action on our climate crisis, a call for expanded and sustainable public transportation, a call for full accessibility regardless of age, ability or language, a call for better access to mental health and addiction resources. The calls we are hearing are serious. It is those of real human struggles. Durango is a beautiful community. It is my home. But with that said, Durango has systematic inequalities put in place to hinder opportunity and advancement for our most vulnerable citizens. To sugarcoat any of this would be unfair to the struggles being lived every day. Enough is enough and the time to act is now. To learn more, you can visit Harrison for Durango. The four is the number four. Thank you.
Thank you, Harrison. If you will mute, please. Our next speaker is Melissa Youssef. If you unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you first to the La Plata County Democrats. Thank you to the board members. And in particular, thank you Gwen Unger and Carol Cure, board chair. It's really nice of you all to host this for all of us today. I want to start by just saying that the past several years for city council have been very difficult. We've faced an ongoing series of crises and I'm not even going to go there today except for to say that as a result of the very hard work that council has engaged in, we are in a very different position today. We have stable, competent leadership in place and they are working very hard to get up to speed on a lot of the issues that are facing our community right now and our organization. And one of the very important projects that they're working on right now together with city council is a new strategic plan for the city of Durango. This plan outlines new city council goals and top priorities. Those goals include work and initiatives that we have identified on homelessness, housing, economic development, financial sustainability and transparency, diversity, equity, inclusion, to name just a few. The list goes on. These goals have strategies underneath them, targets and identified timelines. And this will become our work plan for the coming year with dedicated resources and staff time associated with it. And the process that we've engaged in with this plan incorporates a new working structure for the city of Durango in which we're strategically aligned throughout the entire organization. And we're moving forward together proactively towards these same goals and initiatives. So we are in a very state of being, right, very different state than we have been in years past. We are today in a proactive and intentional state of being and it's exciting. At least it's exciting to me to actually see these goals and this plan of action on paper. But that's exactly what it is. It's a plan. And the moment of truth will come in the implementation. And that is where my experience and continuity in leadership comes into play. I'm intimately familiar with these goals and objectives that we have identified in the plan. I was part of the team that helped create them. And I bring direct, live, hands-on experience and institutional knowledge that I've gained from serving on council for the past four years. I moved to Durango, I have to always even think back how many years it's been, in 1997. I had the good fortune truly of raising three kids here. And my husband has had a wonderful career here in Durango. I care deeply about our community, our quality of life and all of the residents who live here. I hope to continue this work. I hope to continue it together with all of you. It takes all of us. I want to build upon our successes and continue the forward momentum. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. You please mute. Our next candidate is Olivier Bosmans. And if you will unmute, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you for organizing this luncheon forum. Let me start by saying that we live in a beautiful place and we didn't get there by sheer luck. It's a result of the cure and the previous city council members, the hard work of all the people in the various city departments and organization and of course, all the people and volunteers in our great community. Having said that, here I am. My name is Olivier Bosmans and maybe starting with the most important thing about me in my life is that I have three children. They were all born in Durango, the first one being born in the old hospital that was now the library. We love Durango and the area. We enjoy all the activities like everybody else, biking to school, all the sporting activities and participating in the many community events like Taste of Durango and Music in the Mountains. Now for me personally, I'm an engineer and I also have an MBA degree like many people nowadays. I have my own small business and I work for businesses, so I'm very familiar with the difficulties and concerns starting and running a business. I do project management and environmental health and safety consulting. I work on a broad variety of, sorry, I work on larger projects for multinational clients, mostly associated with acquisitions, construction, development and a broad variety of surveys, studies and inspections. I manage the technical aspects, financial budgets and I work successfully with many parties, including project developers, local governments, architects, financial experts, attorneys, the whole shebang. And I also serve on the La Plata County Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments. And I believe that is very valuable to the city council for many concerns that involve the county and especially the ones coming up. I enjoy serving there and I would like to continue my service to the community. And the city council is where I can bring most value. It would be an honor to serve you in that role. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Olivier. If you would mute, please. Our next candidate is Seth Bertney. Please unmute and you have three minutes. Seth?
Thank you very much. I also want to thank the La Plata County Democrats for inviting us to this forum. I, like many people, moved here, well, 20 years ago in my case, and have never regretted that decision. At the end of the day, this is one of the more beautiful places I've ever been and I've been to a fair number of places. I'm drawn to serve on city council based on my experience with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the last five years where I've gotten to be pretty darn familiar with the way this city is run. I've gotten familiar with the city councillors and staff and how the decisions are made and found on a couple of occasions that what seemed to be the best bang-for-the-buck solutions that I imagined weren't necessarily the ones that we were gravitating towards. And I thought, okay, I'd like to be in a role where I could help with this navigating the bang-for-the-buck opportunities. I come to this position with a 20-year career as a professional contracts manager where I was working for an engineering company and the US government was the client. And so we were negotiating the best efficient solution to the obligations that we were trying to deliver. And then for the last 15 years, I've been in the commercial property management where I've been the partner and manager of two large multi-tenant commercial buildings that has anything from restaurants to nail salons and everything in between operating in those buildings, which I just recently sold, which put me in the position in my opinion of having the bandwidth to dedicate to this role, which I see as at least a half-time job if not, if not more. From everything I talked to the previous councillors, it was a full-time job this past year and like to think we're not going to have future emergencies, but I, if the history is any indication, that's going to happen again. We have, according to my evaluation, about a billion dollars worth of plans on the shelf, everything from housing to facilities to water and sewer to transportation. And it goes on and on and on. And we've got $110 million budget and maybe 10% of that's flexible. That's a, that's a long time to achieve that. And so I think that making good decisions is ultimately where city council is going to have the effect it can have. And so having an eye towards opportunity cost and bang for the buck is how we're going to help steer this community to its greatest success. And then get to the greatest degree possible, we collaborate with our partners, we leverage our resources, we gain the the value that our community can deliver to the best opportunities that we can achieve as a community. I think I've got the qualities that can, that can serve that, that goal well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. And finally, Lisa McCory, please unmute and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Lisa McCory. I come to you as a dedicated and compassionate community member for almost 20 years. I am concerned about many issues facing Durango and want to be involved in decisions and change. I have professional and volunteer experience across multiple sectors of the workforce, giving me a variety of skills. I want to especially be a listening ear for underrepresented and marginalized community members. We are only as good as our most vulnerable residents. Equity involves giving more to those who have less to equal the playing field. We personally survived our early years in Durango on social support services. These programs, these services help lift people up, not keep people down. I'm a working-class parent who wants to represent that voice on the council and bring socioeconomic diversity to the table. I am intelligent and thoughtful. I'm a creative thinker and a problem solver. It is important to me to help the city explore ways to heal cross-racial and cross-cultural relationships and to be accountable to people from those communities. It is critical that we listen to them, believe them and their lived experience. What I often hear in response to this is, "Well, isn't Durango like 80% white?" I mean, do you need to focus on that? That is exactly why we need to focus on that. My ability to connect with people through stories will help me navigate the difficult waters of being on the council and participating in decisions that are unpopular. I will show up with more openness and willingness to learn than solutions. I look forward to collaborating with my coworkers on the council and cultivating partnerships with the county, private and nonprofit sectors to resolve the big problems in our little town and to celebrate and expand all the successes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So we're going to move into the question part of the program. I have to admit that this is the part that has given me some heartburn over the last few days as we set this thing up. Obviously, we're, we had some questions that we're sending in advance. We have people putting questions into the chat and Karen and Kathy are maneuvering those. And so we'll see how this goes. I think it'll be all right. I know having been a candidate that it's very, very difficult to hold yourself down to one minute. But since we have seven candidates, if we don't do that, we'll end up, you know, only having three or four questions get answered. So I would very much appreciate it if everyone would work as hard as you can to be succinct. And again, if you get to the point where you've got more details that you'd like people to know, just point them at your website or, or Facebook page or whatever it is. So we're going to start with Jessica and then work our way down and back up to Frank as we go around. So Karen and/or Kathy, whoever has the first question, if you'll put that out there, then we can let Jessica start the answer.
Okay, the questions I got via email and the chat, there's a couple, are clumped into three different categories. So I'm putting the climate questions first because I decided. Dick White asks, "Is the city of Durango doing enough to address climate change? If anything, what would you do?" And it's in the chat. So if anything, what would you propose to do differently or in addition? And Kirby asks, "What are the specific opportunities you see to mitigate climate change for Durango?"
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
Okay, I'm gonna start my timer so I don't try to go over. So I think the city of Durango has so many different entities and that are advocating for climate change. The city of Durango Sustainability Plan, you know, is going through changes and it's my job as a city councillor or will be if I'm elected to, for accountability and measurement. I think that it was a very well-attended effort to that sustainability plan. I think continuing to ask ourselves and question our consumption, how much energy does the city use and on what? Making sure the city is holding ourselves accountable. I think that continuing to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase renewable electricity generation, keep those in line with goals adopted by city council in 2019. And then just prepare Durango to be more resilient to climate change impacts. That's a minute. That is, I like barely could say anything.
How do you feel? Okay, Harrison, same question.
All right, uh, thank you. So first I want to say that with climate change, if we don't pay now, we will pay eventually. So if we're not putting the funding in to mitigate this, we will pay for it in the long run. So we need to take bold action when we are addressing the climate change issue. I have put in my platform that I'd like to join the likes of other Colorado cities of moving to 100% renewable energy by 2030 rather than 2050, which is the current plan. We don't have till 2050. And it's been made clear. And then also, this is just a small step in the, in the pond, but I think banning the use of plastic bags, single-use plastic bags in the city of Durango is essential. And we need to do that and we need to invest in more sustainable recycling and composting programs as a city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Harrison. Melissa, you're next. One minute, please.
Thank you. Good question from former Mayor White. I would suggest that we are looking at three different angles and I'm going to add one more to approach environmental sustainability. We're looking at reducing our carbon footprint through the Electrical Vehicle Readiness Plan and End of Fleet Assessment so that we can consider electrical vehicles as we move forward. We're looking at increasing our renewable energy efficiency, which we definitely agree with Harrison. I would love to see us get here faster. We have quarterly meetings scheduled with LPEA to put a plan in place where we can get to 100% renewal of electricity eventually. They just helped, the executive director just helped the city of Seattle do that. So we are looking forward to engaging in those conversations. And we're also looking at improving our quality of natural resources. That includes fire mitigation efforts, which are extremely important in our community. And forestry planting, we're going to try to touch 300 trees this year. And I would love to add just one more thing. We're hoping to have discussions around a Southwest Impact Fund, which is collaborative, region-wide fire mitigation efforts, which will be extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Olivier, you're next. One minute, please.
Thank you for this question. As you probably know, I've been an environmental consultant for over 20 years. And it's a bit unfair to the other candidates maybe, but I have hands on experience dealing with the whole range of topics such as greenhouse gases, air quality. Water quality, pollution, green or eco building, energy use, waste separation, water treatment, the list goes on. In Durango, there are some good projects and initiatives in place such as the charging project, carbon footprint measuring, energy improvements. I can discuss these topics in a lot of detail for hours and I hope you will reach out for me. Some topics that may need more attention as they pertain specifically to this issue are fire mitigation. If we can prevent one significant forest fire. It it offsets a lot of efforts over many years on the other things. As well as good commuting options to for the people, you know, bicycling and walking. Good connectivity to the downtown areas. And I've worked for over 20 years on a broad variety of these issues and I look forward to put all that experience and knowledge to work for our community.
Thank you, Olivier. Seth, same question. One minute, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the question. You know, when I again joined the Parks and Rec Board five years ago, I did it because I figured the quality of life and. Essentially, our natural lands, public lands was that which attracted almost everybody to this community. And given that, I think that. Maintaining the quality of life, including our forest shed watershed is is essential. I really see the golden goose for our quality of life is the public lands in which we operate. I see several things that I would recommend that we do more aggressively in this town. We've got a community forest plan. Which we do not fund attentively. We give it $50,000 a year and arguably should spend five times that. Because that would reduce the temperature in our community as well as serve as a carbon offset. We have the energy performance contract, which was just proposed to the city council and. That is something that we should fund. I am at my minute. I'll quit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. Lisa, you're next. One minute, please.
Thank you. I would really like to organize the community and step forward into a future that is bearing down on us. Plan what kind of society we're going to have. What the city is doing, it's been mentioned, is encouraging. The energy performance contracting will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve efficiency and offer immediate money savings. Plus the addition of DC charging stations for electrical vehicles. And some requirements for new parking lot developments to install those. We can always do more. I would add multimodal investment and funding is environmental stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Frank, one minute, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, not much to add to that list once you're the last speaker. The Department of Defense had stated several years ago that climate change was the biggest threat to our national defense. We know that all over the world, there will be tens of millions of people displaced by the rising ocean. So worldwide, obviously, it's a huge issue and for Durango, I think. I agree with what many of the speakers already said, we need more bold action. I would like to try to set a goal for 2030, not 2050 for 100% renewables. Why not? So you fail and you're only at 85% by 2030. Wouldn't that be unbelievable? Working with LPAA is course is of course critical. And the other sides of it are our own mitigation efforts of. Climate change, which are fire mitigation and making sure we have good water backup. We had a problem with that in 2018. No mean coincidence, it was during the 416 fire where we almost ran out of water in Durango. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, back to either Karen or Kathy, next question. And this this time Harrison will be the first to answer.
Okay, that's going to be me. This is, we've had a number of questions about the population. Here in Durango. So I'm going to try and combine a few things and address it as best you can. What are your thoughts on assistance to the unhoused populations, including a permanent shelter? And the Purple Cliffs encampment? What do you think you can do to help with the affordable housing issue in Durango? Which is forcing some people into this homeless situation? And thirdly, do you see any merit in trying to help the. Animus View Drive Trailer Park with the purchase of the site, perhaps through municipal bonds? That's a big question, but address it however you see fit.
Okay, thank you so much for that question. I would say that the biggest thing we need to do is. Provide dignity for our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. We need to increase funds to help. Achieve housing and support, whether it's addiction resources or mental health resources. We need to put every effort we can into doing this. These people are on house neighbors are incredibly essential and important to our community. And if we don't look at them in that way. We will never deal with the issue at hand. As for affordable housing, we need more inclusionary zoning. And we need to. Enforce anti discrimination laws against landlords who refuse to take section eight. And even push for renters committee to advise the city council on issues that are facing renters within the city. I'm at my minute, so I want to answer more, but I can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Harrison. Melissa, same question.
Hearing a background there. Homelessness, I'll start with first. I believe the question was, do we support a second homeless campsite? The answer for me on that is yes, I do support a second homeless campsite. I'd like to see us first work with our county. On an IGA, which we are in the process of doing to finalize our working agreement and establish a working agreement and clarify our relationship with Purple Cliffs. Some houseless residents would like to stay there. If we can keep that a safe option, I'd love to see that happen. And then second, as part of our strategic homeless plan with Athena, we have identified that a second managed camp. In a potentially larger space is critically important such that we have the resources available. To make it a formerly managed camp. First, housing, very quickly, I don't know what time I'm at. I think I'm getting probably close. We need to add staff time to help us evaluate housing options. This is a critically important issue. We need to update update our housing goals. We've gotten very close to our long term goals already, but we need to add staff to help us to look at options. To look at situations such as the one presented in question number three to, you know, how we might be able to help. We need staff time and energy and resources to look through those options together.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. I forgot to set my reset my timer when you started, so.
Me too.
Could have gone on. Olivier, same question. One minute, please.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think that's too much question for one minute, but. On the homeless camp, I think the homeless population is topic, it requires an integrated approach. For housing or shelter, I should say, food supply and the healthcare and guidance. And I can go on for hours. The affordable housing equally super important for. Everybody in our community. It's it's not new, same as the homeless issue. This has been going on when I. Moved here 15 years ago, bought a house, it was expensive, it's still expensive. I think the city council and the city should have done, could have done. More to foresee maybe and address this issue. But there are tools that were put in place, some of them work, some of them don't. And I can go in a lot of the details. On density and new developments and the project developers that get confusing messages or not. The most streamlined feedback. There's a lot of things that we need to do and I would like to see more progress. From the city and the city council and I would work hard to get there.
Okay, thank you, Olivier. Seth, same question. One minute, please.
Yes, thank you very much for the question. And again, a big complicated question. With respect to the unhoused, I would say that I would focus on resourcing groups like Nina who. Are deeply involved in this issue and have a number of solutions developed. And I think the city's resources and ability to attend to unhoused is less proficient and less. Focused than an organization like that and I would give them the means and the obviously the capability to be successful. With regard to affordable housing, again, a challenge and really that's a supply and demand. Equation we're facing. We got a really desperate need for housing because the demand is so intense. And then we come down to, well, do we provide more supply? That is the only way to resolve that imbalance. And that's a big question. Is our quality of life impacted? Will we provide? Thousands of more homes for residents to live in Durango. That's a legitimate debate. There's some people who are going to fall on either side of that. And we just need to come up to the decision as a community. We either provide increased supply and there are options. Or we say, no, we are in favor of becoming more of a resort town and don't want to provide that supply. And that is the decision we favor as a community.
Don't want to interrupt you, Seth, but you're well over your minute. So we appreciate the answer. Lisa, same question. One minute, please.
Solutions for people experiencing homelessness is a high value for me. Many people experiencing homelessness have a desire to move from homelessness to housing. Some people want to remain outdoors. The city needs to designate, needs to determine a designated space. There will be opposition no matter what. I have friends who have experienced homelessness. They are teachers, counselors, restaurant workers. And the stigma that people experiencing homelessness are inherently dangerous, criminal or lazy is untrue. La Plata County residents are spending almost 60% of their income on housing. Affordable housing has been an issue here for decades. We are not, nor do we want to become Aspen. We moved here to raise our family because Durango was a more multi dimensional town than other ski towns in Colorado. We won't be multi dimensional if we are not multi generational and racially and socially economically diverse. And I'm encouraged by the, I have no seconds left, never mind.
Thank you, Lisa. Frank, same question. One minute, please.
Thank you. Very briefly, I urge everyone to read. The strategic plan written by the Athena Group, which was commissioned by both the city and the county. It covers every, almost every possible contingency and best practices I've ever read. And we have just begun to nip at the beginning of that. With the start of the navigation center coordinated by Manasou Kitchen and then some new supported housing. Where residents are required to follow a curricula to get them job training, substance abuse, mental health assistance, et cetera. That's on its way. I just can't urge enough that we follow that that plan. Secondly. Affordable housing at a at a economic summit I attended a few months ago, they said the average teacher, police officer and firefighter cannot afford the average home in Durango. I believe that the city has literally failed at that affordable housing. Subject and effort as I've attended economic summits for over a decade here now and it's always the same story. So we need to change, change the action on that. Animus. Thank you.
Jessica, same question. One minute, please.
Okay, thank you. I believe that for the homeless. The homeless topic is that we need to actually make a hard decision and find that location. Where homeless camp is going to be like located for the for now, or no forever, like make that final decision. And I feel like. Once we make that final decision, we can then make the concerns more manageable for the for the permanent location. I think that Manna connects the new program that they have going to help the homeless navigate red tape, needs to continue to grow. So that way it helps homeless attain IDs, access to mental health, food, more transitional projects continuing to go out. Would be is super important. I know the impacts and effects are real. But we need to make sure that we're providing housing and solutions for the homeless. In terms of housing. I guess I think the biggest issue is are we willing to fund housing? We need to provide incentives for developed developers. Detainable housing, grants, programs, initiatives, we have money for it.
Okay, Jessica, hold on a second. Let me let me mute everybody. So let me ask everybody, if you're not speaking, please make sure that your system is muted. And Jessica, you you can take another 10 seconds.
Yeah, perfect. And so I don't know if everyone heard me, but I think we need to provide incentives for developers to build attainable housing. I think we have great goals and a great plan for it, but we can't say we just want it. We need to actually do something to get it. And I think that we're willing to spend money on like shiny new buildings, but we need to spend money on land to build attainable housing and the city has never done that.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Kathy or Karen, who has the next question?
I do.
I think also just just for purposes of going forward, it's probably better if we can keep the questions as simple as possible. You know, because again, one minute's hardly enough question time to answer one question, let alone two or three.
Changing the subject to broadband access, Carol Keir asks, what can the city do to help increase? Better broadband accessibility to all those in our region?
Okay, Melissa, you're number one on this one, so please unmute yourself and take one minute.
Thank you. Broadband access has been a conversation that we've had in the past with Southwest Council of Governments. And what I would like to see the city do is reengage our collaborative teamwork effort with Southwest Council of Governments, get back on that council of governments. That's where the majority of those conversations happen region wide and community wide. So I think that's where we could. Have the the most impact here. In addition, in an all new development, we have standards where we're implementing. Lines and connectivity to continue this effort in town, but I know a lot of it is some of our outlining areas. That I'd love to see increased. I know it's an issue and it would be, it should be a focus. It's a. Key important topic for attracting high paying jobs and and alternative jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Olivier, you're next. Same question. One minute, please.
Thank you. I I agree with a lot of what Melissa said. I think the broadband and is an important. Element of attracting a certain type of business. And a better quality, higher paying jobs. It is an important element in providing infrastructure in growth areas. I think. If you have the infrastructure in place, including the broadband. Then it will be easier for companies that are evaluating different locations or cities or counties, states. To make the decision, but as a city, we have control over this. And I think definitely that is a very important part. To have in place and allow businesses to be more. Willing to relocate or start their business in Durango. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivier. Seth, you're next. Same question. One minute, please.
Thank you very much. Fundamentally, I've talked with a number of Realtors and they say there's two questions. A new owner called asked about. One, what's a telecommunications connection? Period. Question one, answer one. Otherwise, they won't move there. And two is where are the trails? To my point, with regard to telecom, Southwest COG is exactly the right answer. This is a regional issue and that's where we need to focus our attention. But the areas where we have influence in the city are probably as a member of. as a member of the La Plata Electric Association, demanding that they include telecommunications as one of the goals that they establish as part of their infrastructure and electrification of the grid. And then two, we can adopt an open trench policy, where whenever we have an open trench, we invite telecommunications providers to lay a line and make sure that we can network together all the way to the residents, the lines that are, that make the telecommunications infrastructure necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Lisa, you're next. One minute, please.
So, my understanding is that broadband is not cost-effective to put in the ground. There are above-ground methods, for instance, attaching fiber to power lines, which are not currently allowed in the city. That might be one place to explore. It is a serious issue here. As we all know from this past year and the ways that we are living, working, and communicating and socializing. I will second what others have said, that broadband has to improve for our business success, growth, and retention, especially remote Durango recruitment. We've also seen this be an issue with access to education, inequities across racial and economic lines for students and families are showing up hugely and sadly.
Thank you, Lisa. Frank, you're next. Same question, one minute, please.
Thank you. Everyone has covered all of the suggestions really well. I also understand the Southwest Council of Governments is a good source for this kind of information, especially on best practices. And like anything else Durango does or wants to do, it certainly makes all the sense in the world trying not to reinvent the wheel and see what other communities have done successfully, either with grants or with actual hardware or, or what have you that applies, that might apply to their area. Certainly, working with LPEA is a good idea. Everything that the city is going to do is going to be a matter of priorities, and who makes it up higher on their priority list gets the money and gets the effort. But the city can multitask. We have lots of departments, and each department can move priorities up and get lots of things done at the same time for all those departments. Thanks.
Thank you, Frank. Jessica, same question, one minute, please.
When we talk about economic development, broadband is one of the most important components. Working with the Economic Development Alliance, I think, will be key to getting broadband to all areas of our city. I think working with multiple agencies, LPEA, all of them, for open, the open trenching policy, like Seth mentioned, will be, is huge. I think that with the pandemic, we've realized that working remotely has brought more people into our community, and so many of them want broadband, and we don't have it to all areas in our community. And I think that's one of the most important tools for growth and quality jobs in Durango.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. We're on to the next question, and Olivier.
Well, I didn't, I didn't answer that question yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead, Harrison.
Okay. First, I wanted to say that I think sustainable and accessible broadband is a human right. It's a basic utility, just like water or electricity, and we need to treat it as such. So, taking that as the motive to getting that within our city or county is essential. Working with the Southwest Council of Government would be critical, and LPEA, and working with our La Plata County Commissioners, Marcia, who's here, and Clyde, and Matt. I think that this is a very important issue, and we've seen throughout the past year the inequalities that we face within the, within the broadband sector. A lot of students and families who are doing remote school don't have access to internet broadband, and they need it. We need to address it as a serious issue and not just a back-of-the-head issue.
Thank you, Harrison. I apologize for that. I've got a sheet over here where I'm trying to check things off. I knew I was going to mess it up at some point. So, on to the next question. Again, Olivier, you'll be the first one to answer, so you can be prepared.
Okay, it's my turn. This question is regarding sustainable economic development, probably with respect to the strategic plan that's already been developed for Durango. How do you rank the items in the strategic plan in order of prioritization moving forward? And do you think we can, with sustainable economic development, can we still maintain our small western town atmosphere?
Okay, Olivier, go ahead. One minute, please.
That's another very good question, complex one. Let me start by saying that I think the city council and the city, I heard some background noises. Let me start by saying that the city council and the city has a strategic plan and a work plan and goals that will be set, you know, that we have to work with. And I think there are very good items in there that we need to, decisions have to be made, progress has to be made. So, that is for the very near future. And the longer-term prioritization, all these topics are very important. Affordable housing is important, has been important. The homeless situation is important, will be important. The supply of water, we already know is an issue. There's many things that are important. There isn't prioritization only on the financial aspect and how the city departments that have a lot of the specialists and good knowledge are able to bring these things to the table at the city council level. So, I look forward to working with all these knowledgeable, experienced people and get these things moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Olivier. Seth, your next. One minute, please.
Yeah. Fundamentally, I think we need to start with the facts. We need to know what are the facts on the ground relative to sustainability, and whether we're talking about environmental sustainability or whether we're talking about fiscal sustainability. You've got a variety of, I won't call them competing, but forces that need to be coordinated such that you can create something that is sustainable. I think with regard to growing or developing or maturing this community, we are trying to navigate a path that involves maintaining a quality of life we've come to enjoy and for which many of us, it is the primary purpose for which we moved here, as well as developing a sound economy that's fiscally sustainable and that we're all being able to afford the quality of life we've come to enjoy. This is a fairly narrow path, and I think we can do it if we work in partnership and leverage the resources we have, if we have everybody growing in the same direction, the businesses as well as the residents, we can probably get there. But we need to work together and work on some really intensive plans to do so.
Okay, thank you, Seth. Lisa, you're next. One minute, please.
Not sure I fully understand the question, but if I, if I'm, am understanding it correctly, I'm thinking partnerships and collaboration, because this is a huge question asking about economic sustainability and how we would prioritize the strategic plan of the, the city and the, which includes the city council's goals. And so, partnerships and collaboration. We have amazing economic development organizations here and entrepreneurial supports like this scape, sorry, the acronym just escaped me. Southwest Accelerator Program for Entrepreneurs, Small Business Development Center, Region Nine, La Plata Development, Economic Development Alliance. You know, but then if you're talking about sustainability when it comes to all these things, then you're going to get into Four Corps and SASCO and other environmental outreach organizations that can collaborate and overlap on these plans and goals.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. We're back to Frank. You have one minute, please.
Thank you. Everything that Lisa just mentioned are really great efforts that are happening in our town. And they are efforts which are indicative of lots of things that the city's not doing. So, various nonprofits, you know, step up and, and try to accomplish these things. And that, that's a great aspect about Durango. I happen to have a long conversation with Jack Lewellen the other day, asking him basically, what would you like the city to do to support the goals of the Chamber of Commerce? And I then listened for about forty-five minutes, and he told me dozens and dozens of stories about how difficult it is for a private, small business in Durango to move forward in any kind of development, dealing with the city planning department that imposes requirements for expansion of new business that have nothing to do with the health and welfare of the community. He gave an example when he built the new chamber office, that the city required him to put two trees inside the sidewalk, which cost thirteen hundred dollars apiece just for the grading. So, I think we could have the city act more like a partner in small business than putting in roadblocks, because they are partners with small business. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Jessica, same question, one minute, please.
Sustainable economic development is one of the key issues as to why I'm actually running for city council. And I think two of the main components of that are having quality jobs in Durango and having attainable housing. I want my kids, if they decide to move back to Durango, if they go off to college, to be able to get a quality job that pays well and to have housing that they can afford. We talk about keeping Durango's character and spirit and being a real town. If we have, if we make every effort as our community responds to change and growth, to offer as many diverse housing opportunities as possible, we will, we will maintain our character and our spirit. It's one of the core and critical elements of our character. I think that making sure that we're putting money into infrastructure and cutting the red tape so that you're not asking small businesses to spend two million dollars for sidewalks and infrastructure before they even start. As a small business owner, if they came to me and said, you need to put in like new sewer, new water, new sidewalks, it's going to be two million dollars, I would say, I'm going to go start my business somewhere else. And so, I think we need to be creative and work with businesses to make sure that they're moving here.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Harrison, you're next. One minute, please.
Economic development starts with fostering and uplifting our working class. We need to provide a living wage, provide affordable housing, sustainable and accessible affordable housing. I also believe that by supporting, supporting small businesses and growing community wealth and combating gentrification. Small business is an important economic driver for the city of Durango, and expanding resources for current and new entrepreneurs of all backgrounds will create generational and community wealth where it is needed most. We should invest more resources into city programs that incentivize and uplift these small businesses and local entrepreneurs. I, I think when we approach this with a focus of our working and middle-class people, economic development is going to be sustainable and accessible for years to come.
Thank you, Harrison. Melissa, same question, one minute, please.
Thank you. Economic development and sustainability. You talked about the, our plan. The first thing that we've identified in our strategic plan is that the Urban Renewal Authority is the most effective tool we can implement right now in the city of Durango to facilitate investment in underutilized areas. And we are doing that. We've been working hard on that plan. It should be implemented this year. There's a lot of interest already from community members in that plan. I agree with the candidates that we need to be leveraging our partnerships. We need to be streamlining processes. One of the big things we can do right now, most immediate on my, on the forefront on my mind, is helping our businesses recover during this economic recovery. We've been working very hard on it. We're looking at the bump out for business program coming back. Utility relief program is still in place, and COVID business relief programs as well. But also the ability to use parking spaces for business and changes of signage for visibility. So, all those programs continue, and they're all vitally important, and I'm over time. I'd love to talk more.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, next question, and Seth, you can be prepared to speak first.
I'm not sure what the question is. I apologize.
No, we haven't, it hasn't been answered yet.
Kathleen, you got it? Kathleen?
Do, okay, I'll do Laurie's. I'll do Laurie's.
Karen, I'll do Laurie's question. Oh, I am muted, yes. Okay, all right. What do you consider the number one priority for the city at this time? And what do you propose to do about it?
Okay, Seth, one minute, please.
Sure, but the first thing is probably getting our businesses back on their feet. We're still navigating through COVID, and I don't think that is over. I think we're hopefully seeing light at the end of the tunnel. But to Melissa's point, giving whatever flexibility we can and assistance we can to our small businesses such that we can get through this chamber alive is probably job number one. One, I think, is often ignored, but I consider it a fairly significant threat to this community, is a wildfire threat, you know, talking with chief dowdy and such. I think that we need to really attend to the fact that we've got a wildfire risk here that is potentially crippling to the community. I think that's another area. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, Seth. Lisa, you're next. One minute, please. You're muted, Lisa. If you can unmute, please.
Got it. One second, let me restart my timer. Responding to the pandemic, revitalizing our economy, reimagining our future. With all these empty storefronts downtown, we could get really creative. Youth centers, art spaces, housing, giving businesses a lower point of entry with half-cost rents. Level yellow is still debilitating too many of our businesses, the functioning of our schools, not to mention the mental and emotional health of children, teens, and adults. Vaccine efforts and tremendous volunteership are promising, and there is still so much uncertainty. So, continuing mask and distancing guidelines is crucial. And I will end with, city council has diversity, equity, and inclusion at the top of their goals. Serious considerations for redistribution of funds and human resources will be necessary to fulfill the DEI goals of the city and do racial justice and multicultural work throughout.
Thank you, Lisa. Frank, you're next. Same question, one minute, please.
There's not much to add, especially since the question asked for one particular thing, and Lisa, I think, covered about twelve. So, that, that was pretty good overall. So, I'm not going to really answer the question specifically, because we really need, as a city council, to, to multitask on many things. And we've raised all the various important issues like economic sustainability, like climate change, the parts of that being, in my mind, water, water resources and backup, as well as the fire mitigation as well, too. So, all those things are really important in Durango. Hard to really identify one and say, that's, you know, what am I going to doing, going to do about that? The city council really acts many times, initially as a policy leader. But then after that, what comes before it, they have to make decisions on what is brought to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Frank. Jessica, you're next. One minute, please.
I agree that one is nearly impossible to nail down with infrastructure, homelessness, parks, transit, attainable housing. But I will agree with a lot of the candidates when I say coming out of this pandemic and having our downtown vibrant and our small business community strong is going to be number one to making sure that this remains the Durango we know and love. Two rounds of business relief funds the city of council has supported, bump out programs. I know that there's going to be grants for this spring/summer bump outs coming out, electrical forgiveness and more. The city council has done some great things here, but what else can we do? I think creative leadership is going to be essential. Samwon Basin Health makes the decision for when we shut down, but we really can't shut down again. So, we need to give them creativity, like the five-star So we need to give them creativity, like the Five Star Program, like, and more, to make sure that we are keeping our businesses open and we don't lose any more downtown.
All right, thank you. Jessica, Harrison, your next. One minute, please.
All right. So I believe that addressing one of the top city goals of diversity, equity, and inclusion is a top priority. The intersectionality that can come from that by involving so many of the issues that we were all talking about can really increase dealing with multiple issues at one time. We have a serious fight and movement for racial justice here in Durango, and we need to put that at the forefront. And we need to be, my job as a city councillor is listening to our people. And what I hear our people saying is that we have income inequalities. We have racial inequalities. We have, we have affordable housing issues. When we look at that top goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we take that and we involve all the intersectionality that we can from every issue that we find within Durango, we can come up with solutions.
Okay, thank you, Harrison. Melissa, you're next. One minute, please.
Thank you. Since I already pretty much answered the question, top priority, supporting businesses through the recovery, I definitely believe that. I would suggest that, and all encompassing for me, and one of the key reasons why I'm rerunning for city council is I truly believe in the implementation of the goals that we have identified in our strategic plan. They are multifaceted, they're across the board. Their diversity, equity, inclusion, their financial excellence and transparency, their livability, including safety, fire, police, and connectivity, our roads, our trails. They are affordability, housing, homeless, economic opportunity. They are environmental and social sustainability, and they are effective infrastructure networks. We're in a position right now where we are poised and we are launched and we are ready to do this good work together. And I will be hoping to continue that effort. I think it's critically important for the city of Durango that we stay on that timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Olivier, your next. One minute, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I misunderstood the prior question a little bit, but let's move on. I think the, the most urgent issue, as everybody else has said, is working through the effects of the COVID pandemic and whatever it has done to our community and our businesses. And the second is working with existing and new businesses and young entrepreneurs as they pay and create a lot of what we have in Durango, including its vibrant community. Of course, affordable housing, especially work for housing. We need to be very active now, as it will take time before any effects of what we do now results in actual change. The midtown development, for example, before that means leads to groundbreaking, we're talking several years out. We need to improve the systems to make better progress in the near term and in the future. And so there are many important items, and they were all listed pretty much very well by my fellow candidates here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Olivier. By my estimate, we've got time for one more question. So Karen, if you can come up with a good one, we'll, we'll give everybody one more shot, and Lisa, you'll be speaking first.
Okay, Laurie Mininger said, what suggestions do you have for increasing community engagement in city manners and being as inclusive as possible? I'll put it in the chat.
Okay, Lisa, one minute, please.
Thank you. I will start, it sounds like both a justice and an inclusion question, I think. So I will listen to and be accountable to Black Indigenous, American Indians, people of color. As a white person, I try to live imperfectly, I know, with an anti-racist lens. And dominant systems of power and oppression are embedded in our community, just as they are across the nation and the world. And local Black residents and Indigenous American Indians and people of color from this region are telling us they do not receive welcoming belonging or acceptance in Durango in their jobs. They're discriminated against in stores and by people in the community. And I think one other, you know, if I go with the inclusion piece, stop me if I'm over, Gwen, I forgot to set my stopwatch. It would be, you know, looking at our accessibility and access for people living with time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Frank, you're next on the last question. One minute, please.
Yes, Lisa, good answer again on that one. The, the idea of inclusion really starts with all of us, again, most of us, white Eurocentric people with dramatic amounts of education to really undo some serious programming most of our lives on white Eurocentric history and leaving out Indigenous people and African Americans who came here as slaves and their descendants. So that, I think, is putting us as a city council and as a city government on some kind of good education program and out of that develop a good programs which would flow, I believe. And, and the development of the programs, of course, should include Indigenous people, et cetera, so that, you know, we're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Jessica, your next. One minute, please.
I think that my leadership style is exactly what increasing community engagement and including and being inclusive and including everyone in decisions, especially decisions that directly affect them. So when you're talking about the homelessness issue, you're going and you're meeting with the people that live in the camps. You're meeting with the people that serve them at Manna. You're meeting with, I went and met with Karen Zink at Sunnyside when I was researching the effects of the community on homelessness just like last week. And so you go and you research issues, you listen to expertise, you meet with those directly knowledgeable and involved. And then from all of that, you gather the, and make the best decisions for our community as a whole. It's working together with an open mind on every issue and being willing to listen, learn, collaborate, and come together for the best interest of our community. It's not about an agenda, and it's not about pleasing one community or a group of people. It's about who's involved, what do they need, who's gonna be directly affected, and getting their voice and making sure that we understand all components of the issue.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Harrison, you're next.
I want to start with saying that I, I believe that working with the Community Relations Commission, which just nominated two wonderful new people, Treni and Enrique, and working with them and hearing about what we can do as a city council to be more inclusionary, to be more equitable and diverse, to listen to what they have to say to us as a city councillor. And then I think that listening to all people is incredibly important. When we have a city council meeting, a lot of times I hear from a lot of folks who live with an extreme amount of privilege. And it's because of the systems put in place by our city, by our local government, by who, where we live, that these people get more opportunity to speak than the people who are less, who are more, less in, I'm trying to find the word and I can't, but I think that just including everyone and making sure we hear every voice is important in the inclusion aspect.
Thank you, Harrison. Melissa, you're next. One minute, please.
Thank you. Increasing engagement is one of our key priorities and goals underneath diversity, equity, inclusion. In particular, increasing engagement of affected populations, which includes but is not limited to Black Indigenous people of color, LGBTQ, undocumented immigrants, disabled, houseless, and those experiencing mental illness. We want to increase, we're, we are actively engaging in efforts to try to increase our engagement with these underrepresented populations. Harrison just spoke about the Community Relations Commission effort. I really appreciate him being there and, and being aware of that. We did add two new individuals to that commission. We hope that they will bring more divergent representation to the table. We will also continue to work on improving our external communications, including translation services, and work internally through training and continued development within the organization.
Thank you, Melissa. Olivier, same question. One minute, please.
Let's unmute again. Yeah, I appreciate all the comments that were made by the fellow candidates. I think there are very various good programs and sources, the work and training through the government alliance on race and equity, normalizing discussions about race equity, the Volunteer Pledge Program that encourages civility and respect among all residents and visitors. I personally know people at all levels and backgrounds in our society. I recognize and respect the diversity in our community, and I personally lead by example. And the people that know me will vouch for that. The Community Relations Commission is very active, and I, and I agree, we need to continue working on that engagement. I look forward to working with all the parties and all the people involved, and I'd like to thank you for sharing that topic as part of this discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Olivier. Seth, same question. One minute, and you get the last word.
Thank you very much. Got a couple of thoughts. The first one comes from the conversation with Hollis Walker at the Herald, where we're talking about bridging the divide, and fundamentally, the discussion came about anonymity in the 21st century has led to a lot more divisiveness and honestly, a lot more threat than historically has been the case. And that's where honestly, the idea of community and being present and being accountable are all elementable parts of being in community and, and operating in a safe environment, all of which is, is tough when, when you're feeling threatened. To that point, I think that improving our board process and making it more accessible to the community so you don't have to be able to show up on the third Thursday at 5 o'clock to attend a meeting, where I experienced a lady coming in with two children who were unfed, and she could barely get two sentences in edgewise before she had to take her, take care of her children, is almost naturally threatening. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Seth, and thank you to all the candidates. If you haven't done this, you have no idea how stressful it is to try to answer questions that you didn't know in advance and you've got one minute to do it. So let's give all of our candidates a big virtual round of applause. Thank you so much. I believe Carol Keer has an announcement, and then I'm gonna talk for just a minute.
Yes, just really quickly, I wanted to introduce to everybody on the call our brand-new La Plata County Democratic Party Chair, Herb Bowman, and welcome him and ask him just to give us a little brief comment. He was raised in Durango, graduated from Durango High School, went off to Southern California for college and law school. He was an FBI agent and a career prosecutor, and he is really gonna do a great job. So Herb, would you like to say just a word or two?
Just a couple. Thank you, Carol. Mostly, I'd just like to say what an amazing group of candidates I saw today and I'm very excited about working with you, whether you get elected or not in, in the years to come. So thank you, Carol. Thank all of you.
Thanks, Herb. And thanks to everyone for attending. Our program next month will feature Mark Rudd, and his session is gonna be titled "Social Action in Today's Environment." So he was an activist in the 1960s, and he has some really interesting experiences. And he also promised to say a few words about Lauren Boebert. So we'll hope to see you next month, and good luck to all the candidates and everybody. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. This was excellent. Excellent candidates, all.